Hi, Gary. Dale will not be here tonight. But he's the only one, so it's just that it's yet to come.
That's in town?
I don't know. Dale told me he couldn't come. He wouldn't be here tonight, so I'm just like, the only one was still missing in the weather. I haven't heard anything. He's usually great good at emailing you when he's out of town, but...
I'm sending a great grandbaby email, not that long.
I doubt this might have been the first thing on his mind either, so...
I don't know if they're back in town yet.
Great.
Yeah.
I'm ready for great, great.
Well, thankfully, we're not that old.
I've got ways to go, yeah. Grandson's almost seven.
Yeah.
They're fun.
They're fun.
There's nothing like them.
And it's always good to see them go home.
Well, I was gonna get him for a weekend here with her mom. Kelsey's living down Mount Pleasant now, so... And Kelsey told me she sees her mom more now than when she lived fifteen minutes from her.
Really?
Yeah. Her mom drives down there quite a bit and gets Hudson for the weekend and stuff. But I go down there. I try to get down there every other week, so...
That's a little bit of a drag.
I usually stay all week.
Yeah.
I've got a little park inside the corner. Stay with my daughter.
Tammy?
Yes?
I left my packet at home. I came straight from your... Would you happen to have another one, or...
I have mine, but you sure have it.
All right, let's see. Yep, someone called. Call meeting order, the city Rachel Love finding zoning commission meeting for May tenth. Roll call.
Chambers?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Rassleton?
Here.
Kendrick?
Here.
Weisander? Over.
So moving on, approval of agenda. I have a motion in second.
It's on low, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval minutes from the April twelfth meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, or all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Item four. Review and consider for approval, recommendation to council on the plat or survey for the Altoona Homes plat one. Preliminary plat proposing one development lot and one outlot. Approximately thirty-nine point six five acres located at the southwest corner of Northeast eighty-eighth and Northeast fiftieth.
Do you know much about this request?
No, just what's listed there. It says they want just one developed lot and then an outlot. Maps are fat hard, but it's that yellow highlighted in the middle there, so it's kind of across from the golf course, looks like.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was wondering if something like that is probably gonna happen.
I mean, I don't count too well on that where it is, but it's the red here and the developed course there, so it's kind of right over there.
Well, it just seems strange to me that they just want to do one lot to develop and then the rest of it, they're just gonna... But, you know, that's up to the individual, I guess, but just...
And maybe they're just saving the one part for them to have their house on and then sell it off to develop or to develop the rest.
Thirty acres?
Well, actually, I'd say it's closer to forty.
No, 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 I mean the outlot.
Oh, the out, okay.
Well, I was looking through Altoona's projection, and to me, it looks like they want to go clear the ninety-sixth eventually with their annexation. So we plan to...
Yeah, so, yeah, when we look at our comp plan, we definitely want to add. That just makes me nervous.
It's getting scary, isn't it?
Yeah.
My... My other question is, we've recommended to the city council approval of a number of these requests from Pope County. If by chance, we were to annex any of those pieces of development, will they fit into our infrastructure and our zoning and all of that stuff?
Not at this point. I mean, there's, yeah, we have a way to go. If it's something that's closer to us, yeah, we could get it to fit in.
Okay, let me put it another way.
Yeah.
We annex and we put all the infrastructure in. These properties that Pope County has said, yeah, we're gonna do that, are they all going to have to adhere to our rules and regulations?
If they're annexed into town, they'd have to follow our codes, yes.
So we have no way of knowing whether these are... And the reason I brought it up was that somewhere in this literature that we got from the packet, I think it was on the fourteen. It talks...
So on two thousand fourteen, so it's on the plan of this?
Yeah. Anyway, I don't know that there's much we can do about it, but we're gonna run into a whole slew of lawsuits and tough negotiations as we move forward?
Um, it just depends. I mean, if we can, you know, get a voluntary annex going where we're not doing an opposed, I mean, definitely, we don't want to go with the,
No.
Not voluntary.
Right.
It would seem like...
One, force any of that, but we also don't want Altoona to...
That's a different issue. That's a different issue.
Yeah. Now theoretically, saying we're going to annex in, like, the houses in here, some of those already probably who's definitely Pope County Water, who's what water works. It used to be Pope County Water. So I wouldn't see that we would force them to switch to our water. So we're gonna enter, that's gonna be a future discussion we're gonna have to figure out.
But when it comes to sewers and all of that type of stuff?
Sewers, if they're within two hundred feet of a current sewer main, then they have to be connected to our sewer. They would not be, at this point, close enough, so they would be able to have their own septic.
Yeah. And that's, that's where most of them are anyway.
And then once we do get sewer out, like I said, if we do get sewer out to this house right here and their septic goes out, they wouldn't be allowed to replace it. They have to connect our sewer at that point.
Okay.
If they're within the two hundred feet.
I move to recommend to the council approval of this request. Hold second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five, review of the two thousand twenty-two issued building permits.
I did not put them on the fancy side because it shrunk those down a little bit if you could see them, so that's the next discussion.
There's not been too much going on.
No. I think the bad weather, people haven't been as anxious to dig till, so I think if they're convinced building, they build stuff, but...
Did they grow Kimberley?
No, they've started on those houses on plat two. The four that are gonna be doubles and the two singles, they've started on those. Their basement's dug, so that's what they're working on right now. As opposed to the large flat out there, they haven't started. They haven't pulled from it. You know, they're not there yet.
Well, it looks like they've pulled about eight.
That's the eight for... What's the address?
That's plat two.
Five hundred to five, four, two, seventh, seventh street.
That's the ones that are in the current year on area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Those are those four that are side, they're separate, they're conjoined, so they're maybe about eighty now.
Oh, okay.
Is this information I were hearing? All right. Moving on to item six, work session, comprehensive plan, and the city's boundaries. Tammy, I don't even know how we should begin this conversation, but...
I mean, I was very interested in their latest update, the twenty-twenty-two update that shows, you know, in two thousand fourteen, it looked like they were stopping right there at ninety-six, and then bang, they're, they're going, they've got it planned all the way out to us. I mean, here's us right there in the corner.
So what does this mean?
This is in their comp plan, so if they get someone that wants to voluntarily annex in, it would be a smooth sailing to get them in because that's in their comp plan now.
Even if it's over here on our border?
Yeah, and that isn't... Now, you know, that's not saying we can't have that same parcel lands in our comp plan too, obviously, and if someone wants to bother come our way. If it's not in your land use in your comp plan, then it's, it could be declared illegal.
Ultimately, I think, because I've, I had seen this a few months ago. And so I actually went across the hall today and had some conversations, and, you know, this is Altoona's growth. Taking into account, you know, from nineteen sixty to now, the growth is this. This percentage of them are single homes, this percentage of them are R-two, this percentage of it is industrial, commercial, dah 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 dah. And then projecting out, okay, how much land will Altoona need to continue at the same growth rate that Altoona's currently growing at? Ultimately, this was their words, was, you know, most likely, we won't end up all the way out here, you guys won't end up all the way over here, we'll be meeting somewhere in the middle. And so I think, I think it's great that you put this in the packet because we need to somewhat kind of be aligned with, and I think we are, a lot of their light industrial, industrials kind of along the interstate, along with the commer... That's, I think, right along where our plan is, and we push our housing south with kind of some smaller commercial. And as you push out further, you know, you need convenience storage and things like that. And so it'd be great if our plan and their plan have some sort of...
Cohesiveness.
Yes. Great word, great word.
Where's ninety-sixth?
Where's ninety-sixth?
Ninety-sixth? It'd be right...
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Right where the random others.
Okay. Well, I saw this too, and I was, you know, I'm not surprised. But, you know, again, this kind of brings back an issue that I've always thought about, is that, you know, it doesn't also surprise me that there is this type of claim of turf going on everywhere, in every metropolitan area. I just, you know, for, you know, it's one thing for Altoona to say this, but, you know, I don't know where we, we as a city have to adhere to. I, I, I think we're just as, have just as much as the right to go forward and say that our line of demarcation is ninety-sixth or something to that effect, and then see how it unfolds. Now unfortunately, we're dealing with a giant that's growing every day.
Well, they're competing with Bonnerant. Bonnerant is growing quickly too.
Well, Bonnerant had the same, Bonnerant's a great example, because right now, they're competing for turf in that area. And it's a swing, this land goes to Altoona, this land goes to Bonnerant, and it really depends on the development that's happening at that time, which way it goes.
And the willingness of that property to...
Right, to annex. To go, basically, go one way or the other, right? Yup, and so that's...
Yeah, I'm gonna...
That's what, I think, we're looking at, is we're gonna, we're gonna meet in the middle somewhere here, and so we need to have a plan just like this with our, where we determine, we think the line should be.
Well, how far are we going out with our comp plan? Just up on top there?
We didn't go out very far, no.
Yeah, I think our current comp plan, like, just went right out here.
Right there, that's as far as we go.
One of the...
Where is, where is ninety-sixth with respect to our purpose?
Ninety-sixth is right here.
So we're halfway, right?
One of the things I love to have is, is who in that region claims Mitchellville as a hometown? And you can very quickly, this is ninety-sixth, this is eighty-eighth. You can very quickly bring this to Mitchellville as far as people who own that property considered to be Mitchellville. And then, let's see. Where's the park? Is it Thomas Mitchell?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then kind of the same thing there, and remember what we said, this goes in here as the center. And so this, again, up to eighty-eighth would be important to...
Take a focus on in the next five years.
Five years ago, we started talking about ten years from now. Acceleration has been... And then, remember when we competed with Bonnerant, we had that conversation last week about what about North to Interstate. Kind of the same thing there.
Yeah, the acceleration is, was what I was surprised by, because it was in two thousand fourteen to twenty-two, that's just seven years there that Altoona bumped up and went quite a bit farther than they had originally.
In our last meeting, it was recommended that we come up with a proposal, you know, draw something out so that we could discuss further on. And so I did it, and I've got it here in my greedy little hand. I, my proposal would be that we go clear down to one sixty-three.
So that's down by you.
Okay. We'd go over to ninety, west to ninety-six, ninety, second street, we'd split between ninety-six and eighty-eight.
Right here in the middle?
Yeah.
I don't like that green, that's a little green.
There's no street or no road or anything there, but, you know, that's an arbitrary line. And we'd go north to seventy-eighth street.
Seventy-eighth?
Seventy-eighth.
Oh, I can't see that. Where is that?
It's, it's just south of San Diego. Santiago, I don't know how you pronounce that.
Santiago.
And then east to one hundred and fortieth street in Jasper County.
Which is the Jasper County route, right?
Yeah, that's one hundred and twentieth there. So you'd go over another...
About over here?
Yeah, over in there. Uh, in between the two railroads, I would have industrial. It could be, no, further. See, there's a railroad down there?
So you want all this industrial?
Do. All that. Now, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that some of it would be commercial industrial, but at least because, and I think that because of the railroads.
Yeah, but this is abandoned, right?
That's abandoned.
They put cars on it all of the time.
Actually, so...
Do I have to print it for the...
It goes to burnouts.
It's just about you push.
So this here...
Okay, come back over to...
So this, this line here is, again, active. And this here, they say it's abandoned, but it is not. However, all they're really doing is parking railcars on it.
You're right.
And the issue with that is, I believe it's right here.
That bridge over...
Is a trestle. The trestle has to be rebuilt in order to use more cars. And then past Mitchellville here, of course, this is truly abandoned.
Yes.
Prairie City has already made a trailhead.
Yeah.
And they're right now. So that was the plan for this, however, the railroad, this is four weeks ago, told me that up into the trestle, this can be active, and especially from here on, because they expect this to, I can't read it on the... Well, now, do they, with respect to the trestle back toward us, is there talks or plans to abandon it completely for trail development or anything to that effect, or... Yup. Yes. Yup, because of the, because of the trestle here, and then somewhere between us and Prairie City, they had the same issue. But it was just pure rail traffic. Not needed anymore. You're... That's all I know.
Prairie, Troy, my son lives in Prairie City, and they've been doing a lot of work on street crossings, sand, all of that type of stuff. So we, we went to Pella early on this spring, and they're working on the trail from Prairie City to Monroe. So we stopped in Monroe and found where the trailhead is to there. They've got parking lots and everything. And according to Jasper County's conservation website, that trail will go from, eventually will go from Red Rock to Neal Smith. Eventually. We, we, Pope County and Jasper County needs to get together and develop that trail up to Mitchellville where we have a trail there.
So, Chachua Trail has a plan laying around somewhere.
Do they?
Has a plan laying around somewhere, but from the bottoms,
Yeah.
they'll actually use... I need to think about how that goes, but down Jasper Avenue. I think right into the river bottom there, maybe jump over into them. Because at one time, I'm trying to think, who the hell was that was talking about that? Might have been the Iowa State kids that were here helping us.
We tried to put the trail through the prison so they could use the parking. Oh, that was, that was one of, that's been eight years ago. Yeah, they tried to have the trail come down, like, mill, and go through prison parking lot, they were good. Because the prison was gonna put in like a, some type of trail too around it at the time that they were building their new prison, or... Yeah, there was huge talks about that, but then they ended up not abandoning that whole railroad and it went all too, and we put in for a MBO grant, didn't get it for bike trail.
I want to pull back a minute, though, and one thing, I think...
I have one, one further question.
All right.
So is this Chachua Trail not coming to Mitchellville, what will bypass Mitchellville?
Chachua Trail does now bypass.
I know, but if they were to...
Valeria.
If they were doing an extension south, like you said, coming through the bottoms and stuff, it would, it would bypass Mitchellville?
Well, yes and no, might come up Jasper Avenue.
Which is?
And hook up with...
The county line?
And hook up with Prairie City rail.
Okay. Excuse me.
That's fine. I, I, you know, from a land use perspective, that's great. I, I, I would, I'd like to get back to the notion of the footprint and, and the importance of it, and I, I, yours is more aggressive than mine. I didn't even think of going all the way down the, you're talking about going all the way down the university.
That's, I, I think we should definitely go down the university.
Mitchell Wasteland has a Mitchellville address. We're about to pull me out there.
Well, I mean, again, this, we should be looking at this and realizing that, you know, I, you know, I think we should at least establish the terms of lines of demarcation. I think ninety-sixth Avenue to the east, or, or, wait, you say splitting ninety-six and eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, so right, that's that difference between the dark green and light green would be right where that would be.
That, that's just my thought, you know, we could do whatever. We could go clear to eighty-eight, that doesn't make any difference.
Well, if they had ninety-six, we could just go to ninety-six.
Well...
Go ninety-six.
But one of their futures didn't have us going, yeah, have it going all the way.
Yeah, their future one has it going all the way to, what is that?
Yeah, because here's Mitchellville right there. This is our, this is one right there.
Yeah, they're looking at one, like, cotton.
Yeah. So...
That's, that's scary.
Again, in this process, I think we're gonna have to disagree, we're gonna step on other people's toes with respect to this kind of master plan. But, I mean, I like your lines of demarcation there. I, I was thinking one hundred and fortieth to the west too.
I don't think you're stepping on anybody's toes, you...
No, this is not...
Because we have a special right to develop a map that goes all the way to Altoona, they have a, because they have to do one that goes all the way to Mitchellville. No one's stepping on any toes, and I don't think we're ever gonna get Altoona or us to say, the line in the sand is ninety-six, you don't cross ninety-six, and we won't cross ninety-six. That's not gonna happen.
Okay.
So it's, it, again, as I've said in the previous meetings, the development drives this.
Yeah, and the landowner.
And the landowner, great point.
I think, you know, we keep getting these notices when they pass through Pope County. I think, I mean, just philosophically more than anything, or politically, I don't know how you would say it, is get somebody from Pope County in here, and they can be liaison between us and Altoona, Bonnerant, both facts.
I mean, how are we gonna start the process?
Federal highway.
Because we haven't really moved.
State Highway one sixty-three, and that's a lot to think about, but if we keep getting damn notices from Pope County, then we start...
Why don't they ask us first, I guess?
Well, they are, because every time they send you one that says two miles.
No, I mean, why don't they direct the owner to Mitchellville instead of us?
Well, it's, it, like, it wouldn't be contin, they couldn't annex into us because it's not continuous property.
They could voluntarily.
No, not, not me, because it's not like, like this little property right here could not voluntarily annex in Mitchellville. We have to take all of this here, you know, get them connected. Because it's connected by this quarter and the railroad. The railroad annexed it.
We used the railroad as the...
Yeah. We got the railroad to voluntarily annex it.
We don't...
They want that.
So I think, I think that this is a great map from Altoona, and there'd be no reason why we couldn't overlay
Yup, exactly.
Some of their stuff that they've got put out. Because why, why reinvent the wheel?
Exactly.
It's just that we need to have that footprint. We need to say, here's our plan, and we're going to work with Altoona, and...
Well, I know you said to stop one hundred and fortieth, and I don't know if you can see how this, this zoning map goes into Jasper County.
Yes.
I mean, we would have a much easier time providing infrastructure to that side, because our oil fields are out here where the red dotted. So I think we should go a little bit out here and, and, and not just stop at one hundred and fortieth, you know, let's just square this up here.
I'd go to one thirty-second and then run south.
Are you laughing at me?
No, what I'm laughing about is...
What?
Two landowners on that side of Jasper Avenue called me, one last week and one this week, have been approached to sell some ground.
So, yeah, I think.
And the big question was. Where's the water, silver?
Yeah.
Letting the gas run.
Stupid road.
And I mean, our lift station just got built right there where that red dot is. We have a lot easier time to get infrastructure and encouraging development in this, even if that's just more housing or whatever. But I don't think just stopping at, at Jasper County Road, which is what this road is right there, I think we can go that whole stretch. Beyond it, just to be prepared, I'm not saying we're gonna vigorously go annex in that land, but. When they come and knock in, we wanna be able to say, yeah, you're at city limits, we can help you with this and. So what I wrote down when we initially did this plan and we were talking about Iowa State University students. Um, is that they said, we may need to institute a twenty-eight E agreement. With Bonderant and Altoona to keep them from approaching Mitchellville's. Which is something we could, I just don't know that Altoona and Bonderant are working nicely together. Don't I say, I would say that at least is different from, from someone I know in Bonderant, is they're really not cooperating. Bonderant City Hall and Altoona City Hall, so I don't know that. They would sit down with a third party too, I, is, to get into an agreement.
That's, I mean, you're looking at, so Pleasant Hill is already. Up to what, basically one block north of One Sixty-three. That's the line there for, and then you know Pleasant Hill annexed. Uh, way back way, yeah.
Zoddy's Oak, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much all the way to Zoddy's Oak. And so, yeah, you're, I mean, and then. We got, Altoona's got Bonderant to the north, we can, we'll probably end up meeting Ankeny halfway, going the north and west. Very soon. Um, so, and then of course Des Moines is on the, on the west side. And so, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a likelihood that. Again, a twenty-eight E is gonna be, be reached. Especially with them putting this down on paper that this is their plan.
So we need to update ours ASAP.
Oh, I like the, I like that word overlay.
Yeah.
We need to overlay ours. Because then it really, that gives us legal basis, gives them legal basis. And then it's up to the landowner.
Yeah.
Right, right. But that's gotta be in our comp plan, right?
Yes.
So how, how do we get it there?
Um, it's, it's a simple. It's a plan that you guys approve, it's passed on to council, council adopts it, and then it's part of our comp plan.
Yep.
And that is something that I can get started on, um, as long as I have a basis of what you want. It can be really simple, I mean, because really only, we're only gonna update that one whole section on land use, at least. That's my opinion, if you guys, if you wanna do other parts in the comp plan.
I think for right now, it just needs to be somebody.
Yeah, just the, just the part on the land use and.
To me, the important thing is that we put it out now, so when somebody calls from Jasper County. Instead of me saying, well, you know, here, here's what I know, which is all I can tell them. Is to be able to say, actually, if you go up to our city hall, you'll see that we have a file plan. Na na na. And. If we don't do that and a landowner's approached by Altoona, or an alter, or wants to. Hi, you, being Altoona or Bonderant. They don't have any excuse not to say no if we have.
Well, and Landis wanted to be in city limits at the beginning, and it didn't work out.
There you go.
You know, we had that on our comp plan and could have quickly annexed it in.
Yep.
So.
So the next issue is, what is the? I mean, the fastest and most effective way. You know, to, to stamp in our, our little quilt work here and.
I like kind of the plan that Ted laid out, I think that's a great kind of.
I started extending.
Extend further into, yep, into Jasper County, uh.
So you'd go further than One Hundred and Fortyth?
I'd go to One Hundred Thirty-second and just the next one over, so One Hundred and Fortyth.
Is One Thirty-second, is that to that line right there on that?
So county line is, is One Hundred and Forty.
Yeah.
Forty-eight, right?
Forty-eight, yes.
One Forty's one. And then One Thirty-second is another, and then you probably. If you're pushing towards Coal Fact, you're getting into some low.
Yeah, I don't think we can go that far, but, I mean, our wells are way out there, they're.
But you could go, if you went to One Thirty-second and extended.
I know.
Everybody probably can't see this, but if you went to, here's Mitchellville, if you went to One Thirty-second, it's basically halfway between Coal Fact and here almost. But then you could go all the way south and, you know. I think.
I would, I would have heard that.
Structure with, with.
And I do know a gentleman that lives. In this area, is that the right one? Do you know that one, Lombrad?
Pretty close.
He wanted to annex it. Um, that was about five years ago that he talked to me about it.
Yep.
Um, so there is some interest in this area, so I think this would be an easy one to start with, to look at. I don't, I don't remember why we never really had talks on why he wanted it.
Or less would you go, uh? Fine.
Um. Knowing what I know.
Pretend you don't know anything about Altoona.
Know anything, uh, Ninety-sixth I would, I think is probably the best. But I agree with your, which kind of goes along with, with what's on here. Is between those railroad tracks, there's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
Even if it doesn't go through to the east, it's still a stub. So that's a great opportunity.
They could get to where that trestle is and there'd still be rail.
Yeah.
Or that, so. Uh, would you go any further north than Seventieth Street?
Seventy-eight.
Okay. That's not a through road or a through street, it kinda meanders through, it's just a line that goes through.
And you're getting into some terrain if you go beyond that.
It's both sides of Seventieth, and that's probably more important.
Oh, yeah, right.
It, you know, um.
Yeah, I'd go to Seventy-eight.
You got that?
Yeah.
And then I think you just start filling it in with color, again, kind of knowing the railroad and the interstate is where we wanna push our. Industrial, white industrial, commercials, mixed use.
So you're wanting industrial, maybe in this quadrant?
Mm-hmm.
What, but, yeah, the second rail is over here.
Cause industrial is basically over here, gonna push this way anyway.
Yes, it is.
And so you're just basically gonna end up right in the middle.
Yeah, cause here's the second rail.
Isn't this the corner of Altona and Rusty Park there? Where's the, where's the?
Eighty, Eighty-Eighth.
Do you want me to go back to the slide that had industrial or Altoona's plan?
You have internet on there?
Yeah.
Can I pull it up?
You would probably be quicker at it than me.
I'm gonna pull up G I.
You can have seed if you want to, that's easier for you.
Fix the trestle.
I know, and I saw it at Twenty-two, I said Twenty-two, I was like.
If it's gonna hit, it all depends on speed. You know, if it's what they call a thirty-five under, which is typically what's required going in and out of us.
Oh, yeah, I have one of them, yeah.
Industrial.
Takes an adjustment.
Then not that big a deal. It's a wood, it's a wood trestle now, needs to be.
This is my favorite portal. Sammy. And then it's got the engineering, which like.
Extremely expensive.
But.
The expensive part of all.
Click on it, search information.
Buy yours.
Avoiding that, cause they wanna protect our little small town.
The fact that they're new.
Yeah.
It's not bothered by it, they just didn't foresee it coming this way.
You want to sober a few people up.
You know.
This is something we've been worrying about for years.
For years.
Yeah.
And, but nobody wants to do the annexation process and, and they have it for years.
For years.
One of the things that we've talked about in several meetings is when we're talking. This change in the comprehensive plan. This is a land use map, not an annexation.
Yep.
Right.
We're not talking anything.
Okay. But it's also, it's also.
But they're, that's what they're looking at, annexing. I mean, if they're, if they're looking at using it, then they gotta annex it. So. And they've been pretty successful.
Altoona's is all right in. Right in here right now, so actually it's gonna include all this. All the way to the railroad right here where I'm moving the mouse around. That's the industrial.
Where's the, where's the new energy?
In American, it's the border agents.
Mid, mid-American is north of the interstate.
No, no.
Oh, no, not that.
Oh, there's a plant.
Oh, that one, that's right by the bridge here. Sixty-second and this right here.
On Adrian then.
Right there. I don't like your computer.
It's, it was a free state.
That's what you're looking at, right?
Oh, yep.
That little.
Those are the free state ones that they sent us.
Want me to zoom out now? Is this where?
Yeah, you should be able to roll in and out.
See these rails that run around here?
Yeah.
See if that's here? Industrial park?
Mm-hmm.
Industrial?
Mm-hmm.
Well, this is all designated to go into that.
To what?
Go into this industrial park, yeah, yeah.
All, all, all of that?
Actually, how close that is.
All of this here, all the way down the rail?
Yeah.
And up and around that whole area.
In fact, I think it's.
So you can use one of the laser pointers.
Oh, yes.
I believe it's that fifty-six acres here that just got saved.
A cap.
Yeah.
The front side of that is actually commercial and industrial. And that's what's gonna keep that one rail a lot of the.
That's the live line that comes in to the north side, okay.
Yep, basically where these, those two rails merge right there is where.
Beginning.
So that's where I said that makes sense. With what you came up with that, to kind of push here between the rail.
And the new power, power poles they put up? Those put run down Eighty-Eighth?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. There's a reason.
Mm-hmm.
They forgot to come tell us.
Well, they're putting new ones down Ninety-S sixth too.
Yeah.
You know, all the way down to One Sixty-three and.
Yeah, so that's why.
Oh, that's cool.
That's why to me. Eighty-Eighth easily going west is. And again, also because of the landowners claiming to be Mitchellville's hometown.
So that's Pope County, but it's still going to Jasper County?
A little.
Cause I was struggling trying to get some that would do Pope Counties together.
Yeah, it won't do it with the lookups.
But the engineering support does?
Yeah, they do. And so I, yeah, I was proposing right in, basically right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
And you can see some of the terrain on there, and that's where I was. I, I think you're right on Ted with, oh, sword. Because look at the terrain drop and it's, and so getting infrastructure through that kind of.
No, and. To paraphrase what Fred said, we need to put a footprint out there, and so I just drew a straight line and a straight line. Not that they're, you know, that could be perfect recreation area, and it already is. Because Pope and Jasper County uses that whole neck of the woods along, uh.
How long have you been in here?
I think you also, we have a lot of opportunity down here.
Yes. Are those places along, uh. Come straight out of Mitchellville. Down south, down south. Are those estate? Properties? Five acres and more? All those houses that go.
All ones that are existing?
Yeah, the existing houses.
Uh. I don't know what terminology is, we call it rural residential, because that's what. Uh, county assessors seem to have adopted is. Is what they classify them.
Altoona's tagging as low density residential or?
Yeah, so they're, they're big enough to have septic, typically. Not quite what we would consider a hobby farm, so typically three to five acres.
You, um, they end up being like, can we find an example Altoona? Hmm, right here, so before all of Falcon Bridge was there, these were one acre lots along. Eighty into there.
Oh.
That were all, so really what ends up happening is those still exist, they come in and you end up building that around them. That's what's happening on the south side of town as we speak, and those folks aren't happy.
But I could see us, when we go further to the east. You know, we could have a lot of estate. Houses, estate farms, however, whatever term you wanna use, we don't have that in our zoning.
Well.
But it wouldn't be hard for us.
I think the Burmanas sales got that coming to us here pretty soon.
So like, there's a great example, so all those houses were existing in the county and they're not happy, but you can see where they're turning dirt right there. All that's gonna be filled in with housing and behind them.
Yep.
So that's what ends up happening with.
It's like when you run from here down to Ronaldson, you run into two places.
Yeah.
Rural residential, you know, here's three acre lots.
So all those that were approving, that we've been approving, that have been coming before us, is just gonna get eventually heated up.
Well, yeah, that's a thing. And that's my concern, are we gonna be able to, uh, sustain them? If, in the future?
Well, again, I think we need to give people an excuse to say, yeah, I'll go in with Mitchellville, and I think we also need. Make some announcements to area cities around us and again. Pope County, I think Pope County needs to bear some responsibility.
There you go.
Yeah.
So here's my question, and, and if, you know, as we approach this, maybe the answer is. How do we designate a land use as, you know, as the lowest common denominator with the opportunity for it to turn into something else if it needs to? I mean. Um, from that perspective. Um, I mean, I think if you use common sense to start. The rest will just come to you. The rest will come to you. Because, I mean, you know, no different than a city neighborhood. You know, you go into a city neighborhood, it's house after house after house after house, and then there's two empty lots. Not very damn many people would ever say, oh, that'd be a great place to put a coffee shop, you know, no. Common sense.
You, so you do have to have like, I think as you build out your residential areas, you gotta intermix.
Uh, commercial.
Commercial, convenience stores, and stuff like that.
But any, any land that we annexed in is gonna come in A.
Yes.
That's how it works.
It'll always come in.
It'll always come in A, and that's, for instance, the Greg's land, it came in as A.
Yeah.
We had to go through the process to rezone it, and that's when you get more flat, you know, the, to rezone it. But if it met what our land use map said it was gonna be, they couldn't argue that we're going against what we had decided we wanted there.
That's your legal basis.
Yes.
Your comp plan, land use map always gives you a legal basis.
So you kinda wanna have it be reasonably what you think you're gonna want there, somewhat.
Tammy mentioned the gentleman that was thirty-five acres behind. Home in Alsos.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the reason that wasn't brought into the city. He and I and a couple other realtors, some not with my company. Also talked to him, and what he wants to do is, he would like to be able to sell it. He would like to be able to sell it to a developer. He would like it to be rural residential. Two, three, four acre lots. Uh. He prefers that they all be ranches, and this is where he started losing all of us. All of us being realtors, is we're like, no, there isn't really how it works. You know, you can do that, but then you yourself needs to be the developer, or you can't do that. Put those stipulations on, but then he himself needs to be the developer. You know, which could be also one of the most funny of it. But. But, but that, for example, if we would just go ahead and name that as a rural residential, then that would be a great start again.
Well, that's what I mean. The lowest denominator that can be, you know, with the understanding that we can always change our mind. And, and I know you, everyone has a vision of what the industrial, commercial corridor is. But there also has to be that balance of residential, too. And, go ahead.
Here's a great example of what we don't want to do. There's a housing in Bonner Inn that's stuck between Amazon and the interstate in those buildings, right? That Wolf, whatever it was.
Yeah.
I, I feel so bad for those.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Because the.
What a view.
Yeah.
Yeah, and noise and traffic and.
And so that's what this is all about, is planning ahead so that we don't, I would argue, you, you can play Monday Morning Court back all day wrong, right? And we'll do it to Bonner Inn. I would argue when they sat down years ago, they should have anticipated that that's right by the interstate. That that would eventually be commercialized.
Could you pan out or, I mean, so that, and that's my thought, too. I mean, as we.
That far, not far.
Yeah, as, as we consider this concept, you know, and, and I think we all have the same vision of where we want both industrial. I mean, for the most part, you know, panning up and possibly on the north side, too.
Or it's already there.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but in the turf, that's not ours. And, you know, and then the, you know, obviously a commercial corridor here, I still question this. I don't know if that's ever gonna be a bike path or not.
Right.
And if it is, then we should really rethink that. But then again, then, then there's the residential suite, you know, and going out that way. I mean, how, how much detail?
Well, don't, don't try to bite off too much. I think you guys are on a great start. Tammy?
Yes.
Help us draw up some boundaries what we've talked about tonight for our next meeting.
I will do that.
And in our next meeting, we'll start, we'll start where the co-op is downtown. Since co-op seemed to be a big topic of discussion in our, in our neighboring communities, we can talk about whether that's gonna stay there. So, and just move out and again, talk about maybe some instances where people have inquired about, hey, what about doing this? Hey, what about doing that? And my example would also be, um, Spitch Park, that's gonna go across there. So what would you like?
We don't want industrial beside a way that you've been sitting there really getting in our residential area.
I still want my B-bucks. I don't know where it's gonna go.
And I think we need a quick start.
Quick start.
Quick start. Yeah, but, okay, well, so I mean, the positives of tonight is that we have what we think is a pretty ideal of the footprint.
Now, if you look at, if you look at the one, you know, they do have it all color coded, but if you look, they got mixed use one, mixed use two. So it does give you, and that just says mixes would be allowed in this area, commercial, office, large multifamily residential, you know, so it's, they haven't banged it up, but there is some wiggle.
Gives you a little flexibility in those areas.
And it just begs the question to me, is how in the heck did they make that determination? You know, you know, you know, when you look at some of this like.
I think they started with, where goes your cotton?
They have a professional.
And it's just for rail or crane homes.
They're going this far.
They have a professional on staff.
Yes.
Yes. I don't know whether one.
Yeah, several, yes.
Yes.
Their job is to do these maps. They get the planning and zoning and then go to city council.
And again, it's based on, I mean, this is based on a lot of data. If you, if you actually read the reporter, it's, it's all based on the data in the past trends.
Yeah, the total report is over seventy pages.
And then how much, I know, I'm the guy that reads the whole thing.
I do, too.
And, and so it's, it, there's a lot of information that goes into this to project, okay, if Altoona's gonna grow to twenty-fifty, how much land do we need? And how much percentage, breaks it down into percentages of what types of land they're gonna need, again, to keep up with the growth.
Those people are actuaries.
Yeah, I mean, one of their mixed use, mixed use two is what they're calling a community center. It's, it's, uh, community service, commercial areas, grocery stores, but also mixed residential, walkability neighborhoods. So, I mean, it's pretty broad. So you could do commercial or residential and do that mixed use.
I don't think we, we need to get this at depth.
No.
I mean, to, they're to the extent here, if you look at the waterways, they, they've done some water studies, watershed studies. So, eh, the more you build and the more houses in concrete you have, the water's gotta go somewhere. So where's that going? So that's why you see these, all these waterways in here. You know, we, you don't have the staff or the engineers to pull that off. So, um, I think ours just needs to be more of a broad. This is, this is our boundaries and these are, uh, kind of the general uses, kind of like Iowa State did for us.
And just push that.
Yep.
Well, I think we still need to stay and focus with some senior housing and smaller rental options because that was one of our major things when they did that survey. It's over years ago, which I think we need to do another one.
Well, and I don't know, maybe it was in one of my sit downs with ISU students, they talked about this, which was the collector property, property at the time, is it still collectors? On the, on the Jasper County side, across from the Wall Hill, by the house.
Yeah.
Uh, having that for senior housing, cause it's in Jasper County, property taxes are lower and they, they.
They're not that much lower.
Probably not as more, but yeah, so that was something that, that they, they mentioned.
Yeah.
If Ronnie will hurry up, we definitely have a nice little credit park we can start with.
That's so good. That's, that's so good, too.
No.
That's so good, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, we just need to keep the people in Mitchellville alive as we're doing this as well, so.
I know, right? I mean, right now, I'm, I'm shocked on how many people want to live in Mitchellville. I mean, they really do. I mean, houses go up for sale in this town and they are gone. Rental property, I mean, there isn't enough. I mean, there's so many people that, you know, they don't wanna buy it, but they wanna rent. And there isn't anything. And, uh, we need to really think about that.
I think in the Iowa State study, they pointed that out.
Yeah.
We wanna retain our small-town feel.
Right.
Like, I, I don't wanna live in a suburban.
Right.
No.
H, the hockey states.
I understand what you're saying. People that wanna live in Mitchellville, they're like, oh, gee.
It comes this way.
Twenty, twenty kids.
But I mean, if you actually annex in to ninety-six, that doesn't mean we develop it. I mean, we.
Right, we don't have to develop anything.
And that's what we tried arguing with, with my brother. He said, annexing in gives us more legal ways of keeping up what we want it to be than as opposed to having it go.
It can keep us, it can keep us small. We can, we can have more control of it, for sure. We should have done it twenty years ago.
Yes.
All right, so, from a timeline perspective, you, you see yourself coming back with some trouble?
I was looking at our calendar and, you know, May-June is extremely busy. What if we skip our June meeting and we prepare to have a big, huge report that I can present at our July meeting? If that would be allowed.
July what?
Uh, our regular scheduled meeting would be July twelfth.
Okay. I'll just be back for a minute.
I was gonna say, you probably will be on. Yeah, I'll just be back as well.
If that, I mean, if that works for you, that gives me two months here to, a little more time to get it all put together. So I'm not just throwing something at you. It's gonna be something that, and I can have you take you up the maps and we can.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I think we got a good, uh, a good start tonight.
I think so, too.
All right. We want to spread my rock. I don't know if you guys know Altoona yet.
I know.
Anything else to discuss tomorrow?
Yes, I have some questions. On, uh, the Deer Run, uh, all of those properties up there, both, uh, Platte Two and Platte Three, uh, there's no provisions for any city parks or any parks or anything else. There, according to the, uh, Platte Three that we approved, there is some outlots or open spaces along the tree line to the south of that development. So my sense is that the proper line goes to the tree line. I don't know that for a fact.
Now, you can tell me that, um, Platte Three has the council approved it, but that approval's been pulled per request of our engineer. He wanted more time to review things. So they have to bring Platte Three back to council for approval. So we'll have to do, hopefully we can.
Some of that, I think, is also our own fault, cause early on we had discussions about a park, or bike paths, or wider sidewalks. And some of that is my fault.
Yeah, you wanted wider sidewalks.
I, uh, just told them how popular wider sidewalks and bike paths are compared to, to an actual park.
The reason I bring it up is my son, who lives in the Cedar Rapids area, works and has worked with parks and rec in that area. So he's very cognizant of, I mean, recreation areas, whether it's a green space or whether it's a playground with stuff anyway. So that's good to know, as far as I'm concerned, because we're, we need to stand firm. They're, they're gonna do a park or a.
Yeah, we're gonna do that first round just too quickly. We're gonna, um, yeah, they're gonna step back and they have to re-review it.
Who is going to redo a hundred and twentieth street after all the construction on that development? County line route.
Well, that side of six is the hundred forty-eighth. On this side of six, it's the hundred twentieth.
Who's gonna redo from sixth?
To the interstate?
To the seventieth street? Because it's paved or blacktop right now, that distance, especially degraded around where they've been doing the, uh,
Go up.
The plant, the.
Lift station.
Lift station. And then the construction that they're doing.
From the building? Yeah, I'll have to check into it.
We had trouble quite a few years ago, just after they had done the seal code and the safety nets. Just before you went underneath the interstate.
Yeah, we, we still, yeah, we did it from.
They took two tractors and wagons and then it was gone. So I don't, I don't know how that would be up there.
Well, I just want that to be in the fire someplace so that, uh, I've had two or three people ask me who live in the trailer park.
Oh, I said I go down that road like, I don't know, once a week to go to Margos and, well, hey, no, never mind. But it will be an active road, I believe, for the people exiting out of Platte Three.
You bet.
Turning left there to get to the interstate going that way as opposed to coming through six. So it will be an active, we actively use road.
Where are we at on Fayette?
Issue with that road is half of it's county, Pope County, half of it's Jasper County and it's right down the middle of the road. So we can never get Jasper to pick you up any money. Pope has some times, sometimes not. So it, the last time we did it, the city did it.
Wow.
Where are we standing on the web property phase one? Anybody know? I, we're waiting on a plaque or something.
One man for sure, till I was first.
Okay. Uh, I have a question on Seventh Street sewer easements. What do we have for easements on that sewer line that goes from the existing Deer Run property over to where the future face, whatever it's gonna be, on Sixth?
I only know that we have, uh, Redmond and Bear and Barnes. I know we have easements, I've seen those payments, but I don't know about the other ones. Cause that was before my time in City Hall. So I'd have to research and see what all the easements are. But I know, I only know Barnes is because he didn't, he refused the payment. By the time I got there, I'm like, no, Bob, I gotta pay you to turn this money over with state. Cause it was over three years and then like, so then he probably took the money for the easement.
Well, before they started construction on those four buildings that they're putting up, over on Redmond's property, there were flags that went further on, on Seventh Street. And there were sewer pipes or some sort of flags.
I know we have an easement across Redmond's there, where the, where the sewer line was laid.
So do we have easements to put a road in?
No, no, the easement would be just for the sewer. We wouldn't have an easement to take part in this property and put a road on it, no. I see where you're going with that. That's.
Well, once again, I've been talking to three or four people and they said, oh, there's an easement for all of that.
Yeah, it's an easement just for the sewer rights underneath the property.
And there's no water lanes or anything with all of that?
Not through, not through that area, no. I like the idea though, but.
All right, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.